Hey, welcome to the Larkspur Planning Committee, Planning Commission meeting of March 14. This is our first one in person in a while. So, welcome to anyone who's here. Hello. And if we could have a roll call, please.
Oh, let me call roll. Natasha Chalmers.
Present.
Brock Wagstaff.
Present.
Max Williamson.
Present.
Liam Campbell.
Present.
And Jeffrey Swisher is absent. So you do have a quorum.
Yeah, and because we're one down and we're not going to have a quorum for the second item in the public hearing. So if you're calling in or here for 16 Diane Lane, we're not going to be discussing that tonight.
Oh, well, you'll be considering it for continuing it to the next meeting.
That's true.
But no discussion.
But no discussion about the actual project. Yeah. Do we, do we have people who are on the, on the Zoom call? Can we tell? There's no one's on, there's no participants in the Zoom call?
No one's, okay, no one's in Zoom.
In that case, do we have any public comment for matters not on the agenda? No. All right, thank you. Can we have the planning directors' report, please?
Thank you. I wanted to introduce Alex Othon. He's our new senior planner in these coming, he came to us from Pacific Grove. We're really excited to have him. He has experience with historic structures. And just glad to have a full staff and especially with all his experience that I think will be really relevant for Larkspur. And then I wanted to also let you know that the Magnolia Village project has been appealed. The, there is a request for a rehearing or an appeal, and so we haven't, I'm waiting for the city attorney to advise us on the rehearing request. And there's, as of right now, there's no date set for, for any next hearing, but it will be heard again. And that's all I have.
Would the rehearing be with the planning commission?
That, the request is a rehearing with the planning commission.
Before the city council.
So I think if it was to be, I think we would want it heard by the planning commission. If it was, if there's a grounds for rehearing or the city attorney advises that we need to have a rehearing, I would want that before it goes to the city council.
All right, thank you very much. So the agenda actually has business items first and then the public hearing, but we're just going to go back to the normal sort of agenda that we normally have and just dive straight into the one item for the public hearing tonight, which is 88 Hazel. Can we please have the staff report?
Thank you. This is an application that you heard back in December, and it's an application for a floor area ratio variance, design review, a floor area exception. That looks better. They're asking for a variance for a deck extension, a slope use permit for grading, and a fence height exception, which is an after the fact fence height exception. Since the last public meeting, the applicants have just modified the project to include the fence that was constructed at the site that's over the height limit and also proposed a plan for widening the driveway. This shows the existing site conditions, and this is, this is also the, the site conditions prior to construction of the fence. And the existing site has a driveway in similar location to what's proposed. There are three areas of the site that are non-conforming and setbacks. So one of them is the deck that's partially located in front setback. There's a small corner of the building that's in the front setback area, and then there's also a very small sliver of the rear portion of the structure that's in a setback. And the applicants are proposing an addition and remodel, and it would change the materials on all sides of the residence and update the appearance of the structures. This is the front elevation that shows a number of new windows and also a new, or a deck that would extend across the face of the structure. And then I don't think I have a pointer, do I? I wonder if this is a pointer. Probably not. This plate doesn't, does it show? Oh, it does show up. Sort of. If I go slowly slowly, we might be able to see it. So this area here is the area that's in the setback existing. So what they would need, or what they had, we had originally put on the plans was a exception request in order to modify a non-conforming structure and because they're modifying the amount of windows and the height of this area that's already within the setback. What I had talked to Chair Chalmers earlier today because she had questioned the findings for that. So I wanted to point out that in order to have an exception, a non-conforming structure exception permit, there has to be a finding that the proposed project otherwise conforms to the standards and regulations of the code. And this one, because it involves a variance and a floor area exception, I think it would be difficult to make that finding. However, the applicants, we have noticed a variance, a setback variance for the deck extension. And these additions or the modifications to the residents in the setback could also fall under that variance application. So if you felt you could make findings for the variance instead of the exception permit, that would, that would be fine, and you could approve the project with a variance instead of the exception. And I could explain that more if you need more. Again, in the back here, the exception permit was requested just to modify windows on this existing elevation. It's, it's not even increasing really in height. And then here's the side elevation, and the revised elevations are also showing the fencing that's been constructed at the site. And then this is the other elevation that's facing the street. And again, this is the corner that is already in the setback that's being proposed to be modified. And the plans now show a 16-foot wide driveway. There, we did receive correspondence from a neighbor today that has concerns about just retaining access to their site. My cursor is so small. I'm gonna see if I can find it here. Oh, thank you. That's why it's not there. Here it is. So if you could see, this is, this is an approximately 20-foot wide section of 77 Laurel. It's a, a street to street lot. And they were just concerned that the curb that's proposed here might block vehicular access to their own site. And so what I would be recommending is that the plans be modified just so that they don't preclude anyone from accessing 77 Laurel from the right of way area, which I think should be possible to do. I noted in the staff report, there is landscaping to along the frontage, sorry, in the right of way area that's on this backside of the driveway that would probably need to be cut back in order to widen the driveway in this area. So my recommendation is that they work with their neighbors to replace that landscaping, but it's not, it's not included as a condition of approval. There was some conflicting square footage information on the first sheet of the plans. So I just wanted to lay out what the floor area is that's proposed. So what's allowed for a sloping site of this size with a 26% slope is 2,314 square feet. The existing residence has a floor area of 3,312 square feet, which includes a lower floor that has some living space as well as a large garage area. And then the main floor is 2,077 square feet. What's being proposed is some lower floor square footage as well as a garage. The garage is reduced in size, but the, the living space is increased in size. And then there's also an, an accessory dwelling unit proposed on the lower floor. And then the upper floor is now 2,272 square feet. So the total actual floor area at the site is 4,255 square feet. But the city doesn't count 800 square feet of the ADU. So the adjusted floor area proposed is 3,455 square feet, which is an overall addition of 143 square feet if you don't count the accessory dwelling unit. The architects submitted an elevation. When I was doing the staff report, I didn't notice that these plans had, did have a railing on them. They're just not shown on the elevation drawing, but they're, I, I don't have a concern with the railing proposed here. I was just concerned that we didn't know what the railing was going to look like. And so I included a condition that said it needs to be a, a dark material. I think what they're proposing here would, would go well with the, the design of the house. It looks like it matches the railings on the, on the structure. And then the architects have also shown the fence that's been constructed at the site, which consists of a retaining wall that leveled out the yard in front of the lower level. And then there was a six-foot tall, some areas are taller than six feet fence that was built on top of that wall. And staff is recommending that the, either the fence be reduced in height to three feet. So that would still be a, a fence height exception to allow essentially a six-foot fence in the front setback. Or requiring the fence to be moved back from the face of the wall three feet so that the two structures aren't measured together. So there's a little break between the retaining wall and the fence, ideally something where landscaping could be planted to soften the appearance of the fence. And so what we're recommending tonight is approval of the project. Approve the FAR exception designer view and the variances from the setbacks. Approve the fence height exception with modifications. And then approve the grading permit that require some planting in front of the front wall specified in the conditions of approval, and then also require the driveway to be modified to allow access for 77 Laurel, or at least to not preclude access to the right of way for that site. And that concludes my staff report unless you have any questions for me.
Same, no question.
Yeah. Could you explain a little bit more about the non-conforming structure permit and its relation, I guess, to the deck setback exception?
Okay, so a non-conforming, or we had included an non-conforming structure setback exception for proposed modifications to the residence, including alteration of the one court, front corner of the house in the back corner. I, I would agree that I don't think findings can be made for that, but you could approve findings for a setback variance for those modifications based on the unusual shape of the site. And the fact that there's an existing structure there that in order to comply, the home would have to be demolished, which based on the scope of the project doesn't seem reasonable. Does that answer your question? And then the deck itself also needs a setback variance.
And I could jump in here because I was the one that raised this issue, and I called a lease earlier today because when I was reading this, they made a recommendation for the structure exception permit, non-conforming structure. And I, looking at the findings, I just think it's, it's the wrong, basically, it's the wrong item that they've selected. Really makes, it's a better fit to have a variance for that one particular item. If you look at the findings for the variance and then at the back of your package. And then you would just go through and decide if, that you can make the findings for the variance as opposed to the findings for an exception permit.
Got it.
And then a small area of the deck. New, there's a small new area of deck. They're calling it a, I think, like a walkway is proposed in the setback, but I think it would have minimal impact on anyone because there's no structures that are directly across the street there. And it does allow them to have door, doors in that master bedroom and another way to exit the house, which seemed reasonable. And I don't think it would have any negative impact on anyone.
So I had a clarification question. So right now, the way it's drafted, that it does cross over 77 Laurel.
It's not, it's not built on 77 Laurel. It's no longer on the site. So it's, the redesigned driveway is, is entirely in the right of way and no longer on 77 Laurel.
So as it presented tonight, it's no longer.
Correct. So the concern is more about is if there's going to be a, they indicated that in the past, maybe there was a carriage access on that side of this, the site. And so I think what their hope is that they still maintain the right to have something that would have wheels be able to get from the right of way to their site.
What is, okay.
This is getting, what was crossed is getting removed.
Okay.
So this just right, it's right.
Oh, I see. Right.
And it's kind of confusing.
Okay, and 77 is back here, right? Yeah. That's what I remember. Yeah.
Access that way.
They want access. Yeah.
And, yeah, I think, I don't know that it has to be built to provide them with access as much as I think it could be built in a way that doesn't preclude them from accessing if they wanted to. So if, as opposed to, if there was a curb there, it might make it impossible for them to cross. But it, I don't think it needs to be that way.
Got it. So maybe the applicant can address that when they make their presentation. Do you have any more questions for the staff? No, in that case, should we invite the applicant to to present? Hering?
Oh, right there. Thanks.
Hey there. Scott Myers from Chrome Architecture. I was on the Zoom for the first one of this. So some of you might recognize me, but a different context. I like this much better. So if we can, I can, I can take your questions or I can kind of just go through what we, you know, I kind of made this presentation last time. I mean, there are a few differences. Basically, the, you know, the, the addition on, on the application of the fence that the homeowner built prior to getting approvals. If we want to talk about that, I can, I can definitely go through that and then we design the house. So, yeah, the, the homeowner who's a licensed contractor built that retaining wall in fence based on a proprietary system that he uses on some of his other jobs, obviously without approvals and without, you know, kind of letting even me as the architect know that he was doing it. So it was a surprise to me when, when I saw it shortly before our meeting last time. So the, the retaining wall itself is conforming to the maximum heights requirements, even though the slate, you know, goes up and down and has to go around. And then the fence on top is actually six feet 10 inches that runs straight, you know, it's even all the way across, which is shown on the drawings. And he basically modeled the, the whole idea for that on 77 Laurel's fence, which is right behind him. And I think he understood that it was taller than was allowed by the zoning code, but when he spoke to 77 Laurel, they told him that they got a fence height exception. So that's what he was going to have to the fact of platform, which is what we're doing here. And, you know, in places, if you take the six feet 10 and then the three foot plus or minus six inches down there, you know, we're definitely up about 10 foot four at the highest elevation from, you know, grade to the top of that fence. And obviously, you know, like, once it was there and everybody kind of started to see it, it definitely is kind of like a wall that it does impact somewhat, you know, the feeling of the street, doesn't impact anybody's views because everybody else is above them. But it's, you know, been a concern. It's definitely true. So even though he's, you know, he's asked, we've asked for the full height exception. And then, you know, the, you know, the staff recommendation was for three foot. We were hoping to still get somewhere maybe in between where we're at in three foot because, you know, a three foot is really, it's, it's like a railing as opposed to a fence for privacy. And that's kind of in, you know, in the, the exception request, you know, privacy was one of the issues. And then the other, other issue was, you know, pet safety and, you know, kind of keeping them in the yard and then possibly keeping, you know, other prey out of it's on a hill. So it's going to be difficult to do that regardless. But with the three-foot high fence, it kind of defeats the purpose of both of those. Because, you know, that is a street where there's lots of traffic on, you know, to gain access to all the homes around there. And people can see pretty much right into that lower ADU that we're trying to get. So it would be less attractive for potential, you know, tenants or people to use it. So if we could get something in between, the way that the fence is, you know, designed and built now, is it solid up to a certain level? And then it has, I think it's one foot two or one foot four of open slats at the top. And we were hoping to maybe get it, instead of the six foot 10 total height, something closer to maybe five feet with the same distance open at the top. So that, you know, if ADU tenant were sitting on their patio, they could still see through that part, how, you know, and then but the solid part would block views from the, from the street coming out. So I understand, you know, we, we understand that it's definitely way too tall. But like I said, it was based on Laurel's fence and retaining wall, which in some places is up to 13 feet tall. And it's, it's a huge, if you can show that picture.
I don't have it.
I'm in the file.
Yeah, they're in, they're in the package.
We can pull it up.
Yeah.
It's in. Oh, is it?
So it'd be this one. Yeah.
That would be in.
Is the other address 74 or 77 Hazel?
74.
A Laurel, okay.
It's on the uphill side.
Yeah. A 77 is the one with the driveway. 74 is the one with the fence.
So, I mean, if you guys, if you have that, I can here, you know, you'll see that our fence at six foot 10 more, you know, less than half the height of that, which is right around the corner. And obviously with, you know, our retaining wall in some places that, you know, fence kind of bends around and goes back to grade at that point. So this, you know, that height is six foot 10 right at, at the corner. So, you know, we were, we were, that's kind of where he came from. I personally obviously think that the, that the one uphill is pretty, you know, ominous looking. Even, you know, in their backyard at 78 Hazel, it's pretty imposing. It's, you know, still very tall back there. So, I mean, we were, you know, proposing some, you know, even if we're, we're kind of asking for, maybe split the difference. You know, we're still going to be substantially less in height than, than was, is presented at, at that property. So, yeah, that would, that's consideration we're asking for, even though the staff, you know, recommended just the standard three foot. We're kind of hoping for something in between just to, you know, satisfy what, you know, the kind of initial reasons why he built the fence in the first place. And so that would be something to discuss. So that's, I mean, for me, that's it with the fence. I don't know if there's much more, if you have any more questions or if you, and, you know, it's, it's not an option to push it back. You know, and build it, you know, say two to three feet behind where the retaining wall is because it's all part of the same system. And so he would have to basically build a whole new thing there, whereas these posts come directly out of the same piles that go into the ground to hold the retaining wall up. It's built as part of the same system. So he'd rather just keep it there and, and cut it down and keep, cut it down relatively easy to whatever height get here today. It would not. The first suggestion with, with a hope to maybe come to a compromise between, yeah.
Sorry, is that better? I guess I'm turning it off when I'm not talking, but but, yeah, I should remember to turn it on again.
Anything else?
Well, I was gonna say, do you have any more?
Questions if you want to start, keep talking about.
Well, I was, if, do you want to, is, do you have more on your, on your presentation?
I mean, we, we did talk about the house the last time around.
Yeah.
It hasn't changed substantially. We lowered the, the new garage by about two feet just to make the slopes of the big driveway work because the existing driveway is pretty precarious trying to get up and down and it's skinny and all that kind of good stuff. So we did lower that. So we had to put some steps on for the front for the entry, but that's really the only difference to the house itself. Everything else is the same as we spoke about.
Do you want to address the come, the request from 77 Laurel about the driveway?
Okay.
Or the access?
Yeah. So we, as part of, you know, widening the driveway, we pulled it off of, you know, the existing driveway cuts off the corner onto their property. And so we pulled it, you know, off of that, totally into the right way as, as, you know, we explained. And, you know, right now, there would, there would be a curb there. I mean, that's, but behind it is just grave, just dirt. And we have a lot of cut and fill on this project. So we can maybe work with that neighbor. They, they have a good relationship with the homeowners here. We use, you know, because we have, we did have an excess of, of, of cut that we're gonna have to get rid of so that we could maybe use that to fill in, to come up so that it would be even as opposed to having a curve there. Because it does show, if you look at the civil drawing, C2. It shows a two foot, definitely fall up wall there. So we, you know, that would be my suggestion to the client. And to, you know, to discuss with, what is this one, 77? To use some of the, the cut that we have there to fill in so that we don't have to have a retaining wall in that location. So that they could have access, you know, vehicular at some point.
Do you have any questions for?
Sorry, I just had, I'm back to the fence for just a second. So you could cut the post off at, at grade and then step back another fence, two or three feet. Could you not, or?
Well, of course you can, but that's basically building another whole system when you, you know, obviously already built this, you know, 170-foot long fence as it is. To then say, you know, let's build another one, you know, two feet back or three feet back of that is, you know, a cost consideration that if there's another option or alternative, we'd obviously like to, you know, that be.
That's what I was curious about. Yeah.
You have any, you have questions?
Would you mind confer? I mean, I guess the railing along the driveway that was brought up in the staff report, it sounds like that's been addressed. Is that accurate?
That is, that is accurate. Yeah, like unfortunate, I was away for a couple of weeks right before this meeting. So my colleague who was trying to get all this together missed that in the digital submission, but in the printed ones that we dropped up here, they were that, the rendering that showed there, were in it. And so, yeah, that basically would be, we would match the railing that's going on the deck, you know, with what's on.
Okay. Any more questions? Yeah, well, Matt can ask a, sure, ask a question, right? Yeah.
So the, the question is really just, you know, in looking through your writings on the fence height exception, you know, you talk about, there's a specific quote about how it would not, basically not mesh with the neighborhood and, you know, from the photos, obviously, it seems like even on the corner, especially there will, even with, with the, you know, plans not modified, there would be another fence, you know, much taller right next door. Is there, are there reasons, you know, outside of, you know, is that, you know, basically, does that not kind of carry? And then also, are there other reasons outside of just like the, the actual code as to why this, you know, we don't want to necessarily go above three and a half?
So I guess my concern with comparing it to 74 Laurel is that I can't find any approval for 74 Laurel.
So I guess my concern with comparing it to seventy four Laurel is that I can't find any approval for seventy four Laurel. For the design that was constructed. Um, I did find an elevation for a fence. But the fence was set back a foot from the retaining wall, so, um, the pieces would have been measured separately, and then it would have been in compliance since seventy four Laurel is a side yard fence. Um, but how it was built was right on top of the wall, and I haven't find it, found any fence height approval for that, so I feel like it's comparing it to a fence that wasn't. Probably, or wouldn't ma- might not have been approved. That's my only concern, but otherwise, yes, if it was approved. It's hard to say it doesn't match the fence next door.
Thanks.
Is, is that fence at seventy four Laurel? It looks like in the photos that it's like set back a little bit, does that have any?
It's setback, um. I don't know where the property line is there, but the, it's setback from the road. And then there's a lower retaining wall in front, the, the photo that was shown earlier, I think, um, is a little bit older, there's been some landscaping installed. So they have like a stone wall. Some landscaping and then this concrete retaining wall with a fence on top. But there's, there's more between the street and the. And the wall than what's proposed for eighty eight Hazel. There was a, and there was a fairly, fairly extensive landscape plan. For that seventy four Hazel site, so even with that wall, there's still a lot more vegetation, it hasn't grown in very much yet, they're, they look small now, but. There's plants that should grow to screen. Hopefully at least that concrete wall. And soften its appearance.
Any more questions from the commission for? Okay, well, thank you very much.
Do we want to talk about the house, or are we?
You know, I didn't have any questions on the house, but is, does anyone? No, no, we'll come back to you if we do.
Okay.
Thank you. Um, do we have anyone in the audience on Zoom? No one?
In the audience.
There's actually no one that I can't tell anymore, it's like.
On Zoom or in person?
I used to be able to lock in and see. Okay, in that case, I guess we can just bring it back to the commission for discussion. This is our first time actually doing this in person, so, um. Does anyone want to go first? With their thoughts?
Okay, I'll go first. I liked the house before, I still like the house. Um, I think it's a good architectural solution. I really think that the fence is an issue. And, uh, I would not be in favor of approving it as is I, using seventy four Hazel, um, is. I don't know how that happened, um, it wasn't on my watch, but. But, uh, I think there are ways to mitigate. That, as staff suggested. In the best of all worlds, it would be nice to step it back a few feet. But, um, dropping it down, uh, to the three feet above grade would. Al- also be, um, make a big difference, I think, so. That's all I've got.
Thank you. Liam, do you want to go next?
Sure.
Okay.
Gently. Gently.
You know what, while you work on that, Max, do you want to go, why don't you check your comments? Here, you need to use mine next.
So, yeah, so I think, um, the, the only thing, just really in thinking in terms of creative problem solving, I agree with. Um, with Brock's comments, generally speaking. In terms of creative problem solving, in terms of, you know, since it seems like solution one and two are at least not optimal for the applicant. I don't know exactly, like, you know, if this works within the property line, but if there could be, you know, both are, you know, middle ground in terms of fence height, and then. Maybe even, um, some like, uh, not floral, but foliage on the outside of the retaining wall. To help, you know, kind of mitigate some of the, like, eyesore that comes with the big wall. I just don't know if that's an option that we could consider, but, um.
What's your suggestion on the fence height then?
Meaning, meaning if we compromise on fence height?
You mean, you're suggesting bringing down the fence height?
Yeah, exactly.
At the same time, putting in landscaping?
Instead, basically, if, if the three and a half feet doesn't work necessarily for the applicant and they can't step it back. Then if there's a middle ground, something to mitigate the eyesore could be. Foliage on the outside of the retaining wall.
Yeah. I like that suggestion.
Since the retaining wall essentially serves as an extension of the fence.
Yeah.
That's part of the issue.
Yeah, we, I mean, we can make that as a condition of approval if we needed to, yeah. Um, do you have any comments, anything else, or?
No, I, yeah, I think, I, you know, agree with the general sentiment, I just am thinking more creatively around how to find a win win.
Great, thank you. Do you want to use mine?
Commissioner Swishers, does that work? Okay. So I'm Commissioner Swisher. Uh, no, um, I, I think. Last time, uh, we, we looked a little bit more in depth at the house, I, I don't. I, I think it's a, it's an attractive design. I, I don't have a problem with the floor area ratio exception, it's a pretty modest improvement, especially when you take into consideration the ADU. Um, so an extra. Unit for the, for, of housing for the city slope use permit, um. I mean, cut and fill, I think, is inevitable on. Uh, slope, and I don't think this is excessive. And then the setback for. The deck and for the corner of the building that's. Within, you know, too close to the right away, I think. Uh, those both, both make sense. So I'm, I'm in favor of those, but in terms of the fence height. You know, driving on that road, I, I think I'm in agreement with, with Brock that, um. It's not. I don't think it's a good comparison to compare it to seventy four Laurel. Because. We shouldn't repeat. The mistakes that have been made in the past. And so. I think that, uh. If we could lower the height of the fence and maybe make a transparent section on the top, I mean, I have a. Um, I guess I have a little bit of a hard time thinking about privacy, people looking in from the outside. Just because from the street, you're looking at it up. And you have, I mean, you do have a six foot section there, um. That should keep people from the street from looking in to the lower level of ADU. Um, in terms of like pets and keeping. Pets and, you know, people in the yard. Um, I think a transparent fence or an open fence design that isn't quite as blocky from the street could. Do that, uh, you know, function. Just as well. So I think. My thoughts.
Thank you, thank you very much, um. And for myself, I actually completely agree with what Commissioner Campbell just said. Um. Again, no issues with the design review, we discussed that previously, um, and in the prior meeting, we, I mean, it is a number of things that they're asking for, it's kind of a lot, but some of them are quite minor. So the only really sort of correction I wanted to make was. I think we need to ensure that they're not asking for the, um, exception permit, because that, I can't make the findings for that, it needs to be a setback variant. So we just need to make sure that's corrected and updated. And then, uh. Yeah, on the fence, again, I agree with. What I've heard tonight from my fellow commissioners, I also didn't like the fence when I went by, I think it's just too much, it's too tall, um, we can't. I, I don't, I don't, I don't like the one next door either, and I think that shouldn't have been approved, and I think. Maybe at some point, somebody will look into that, but, um. Just because, I agree with, like, just because that was, that's there, we shouldn't, we shouldn't agree to this, this same height. So if we can bring that down, it sounds like the applicant didn't want to do a separated fence, so. I don't think that's necessarily something we need to force them to do, so if we can have a shorter fence, and I really like your idea of having the landscaping or something blocking the, blocking it at the front. To make it more attractive. So I don't know how specific we need to be on that tonight. Or whether they can work with staff to find something.
Be comfortable working with staff if, if it's the condition specific, or if it's that simple, just landscaping in front of the wall, um.
Do we need a, an actual height that we need to agree to tonight?
Oh, for lowering the fence? If you, I would specify a height. Or if there's a, if you want to do a certain distance of. Solid versus. A certain amount of. Fifty percent transparent. Or.
Yeah, I mean, I, I didn't have a strong view on that, I mean, my thought was, most of Luxford has to deal, has, you know, a lot of people here have pets, and we all have. Lower fence height, so, um. I didn't really feel like having a pet was a good sort of excuse to have a high fence, but. If there's something that we can agree on in terms of. I don't know if anyone here feels strongly about transparency, I know you mentioned that, or whether you want to make a suggestion.
Right, I, I was just gonna, I'll add two again, um. The, the three foot, you know, suggestion, if, if maybe we could do that as the solid part.
Mm-hmm.
And then, you know, just basically like, the, the more transparent open section at the top that we've already done. Like, on top of that, so it would be about four foot two total.
Total.
Yeah.
Total fence plus retaining wall or?
No, the retaining wall.
Retaining walls existing and then.
Wall. It's gonna be, and I think we, I, I think we have six feet, like. Total that were allowed, um. You know, so I think that's where the three foot number came from, because if we kind of average out the retaining wall, we have some, like, one section that is about three foot six, and then a three foot. You know, fence on top of that would be a total of six foot six. But I think that it averages out to less than that as you move around. So, you know, if we could maybe do that, I, I think, you know, that three foot solid section. And then just that same open section that we already have on top of that. It's, it's still higher than three feet, but it's. Two and a half feet.
Just, it's two and a half feet higher than the.
Shorter than it is now. Um, so it's six foot ten. Now.
You would go down to four, four foot two.
Right.
And when you say tran- or transparent, are you, are you talking about?
I'm talking about the, the way that it's built currently, yeah, like those.
Strike trellis.
Open.
Yeah.
You know, slats on the top as opposed to.
So, are, are, I'm, I'm still confused by what you're saying, are you saying you would go up? It would be solid three feet above grade, the upper grade, and then, uh, three foot. Six above that would be. With the, the.
So, so basically, what I'm saying is, we have the retaining wall. That that height is set, you know, ba- based on the maximum that we were allowed for retaining, so that is. You know, that is even elevation all the way around. And then we would do a three foot section of solid fence on top of what was suggested by. And then we would just put on top of that, just that sec- that little section of slats that we're showing on.
Maybe I misunderstood.
Yeah, I, I think that's too, still too, too massive, um.
I'm using this picture here, which I think might be helpful, because it actually shows the retaining wall and what you have on top. Yes, please, yeah. With, I was under the impression that this was the retaining wall, and this is three feet.
That is plus or minus.
And then you would, and then you would have two feet here.
So we would have now.
No.
Yeah, so this total distance from here to the top of this is, we're allowed six feet. Right, because the, so this. Is, you know, like I said, it runs around, some places it's three foot six at the maximum, other places it's really short. So above here. This is three feet that we're planning that recommendation. Right?
Yeah.
And so what I'm suggesting is like, that is like, we just take this little section and we put that on top. Of that, and so it becomes about four foot one.
But that's, it's four foot two plus the retaining.
But, yeah.
So it's really seven foot two.
Right, right, so we're still asking for a slight exception to. What has been, what is allowed by. Because this is, you know, that is all what.
And why does it need to be this high? I mean, you're not, nobody can.
Well, they're, they're also filling in with all of the, the cut that we're using from the hill. They're filling in so that this is flat, so this is all gonna be flat up to here. After.
I see.
We get this from it, so. So that's what I'm saying, it's like, this is only gonna be as tall as this when you're standing behind.
Right, but on this side, we.
But on that side, right.
See the whole thing, okay.
That's the nature of that slip side, obviously.
Yeah.
I mean, I, I could see doing three foot six, which is sort of your standard above grade.
Right, but I mean, it, when, you know, we were just saying about, you know, everybody's got a fence, but that's, that's. All those fences are. High heights to a personal limit, it means to go. So those are like, you know. Five foot six or even six foot tall fences that separate your, you know, property from your neighbors or. Uh, you know, whoever else, so when we're talking about, you know, pet safety or anything like that, a pet, you know, any dog that's bigger than, uh, you know, chihuahua or anything like that. Will jump over a three foot fence in no time flat.
Seven foot drop, though.
I'm not trying necessarily agree, because I think a lot of homes. If you drive around Luxford, have open front yards with three foot, I mean, there are definitely some that did get a fence height exception and a higher. But there's something nice about the openness, and that's why we have the rule in the, in the ordinance, in the ordinance.
Is there a way, oh, sorry, is there a way to make it more transparent, maybe? Would that solve some of those?
Horizontal slats, I mean, we could. Instead of the, you know, the five or six that we have every connection with.
I mean, well, I guess it would be.
Decrease.
Decrease the amount of slats to make it more open space, I guess.
The, give the ones that.
Okay, say, increase the number.
Increase the, the wider space.
Oh, I see.
I mean, it's not a privacy issue, right, because I don't think anyone can see it.
Well, yeah.
It's really about a pet, so it's.
Well, I, 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 I mean, I, I, I think I hear you, because. There isn't, I mean, a side yard can be seven feet tall, but on this property, there's a lot of frontage to the road, so there's a lot of. Front yard technically. But it seems like, you know, in some areas, at least. It's, I guess, functioning more as a side or rear yard, you know? Where, you know, in a house that's in a subdivision and has a square lot, you'd have the house and you'd have a couple of fences on the side.
Yeah.
And you'd have a seven foot tall enclosed space in the back. Where you might not. Get that here, if you had a three foot fence.
Yeah, but this is what you can see from the front, you see.
Right.
That's what makes a difference.
No, for sure, for sure.
No, I, I mean, it's just, I, I totally agree that's way too tall, I mean, I'm, I'm, there's no thanks for it being as hard as it is, I'm just trying to find a way. That, you know, the, the homeowner's concern can be. Adjusting, let's three foot. More like the, the total height, because like I said, it's gonna be until behind.
Yeah.
To be at grade behind. It isn't, is not right now.
So what can we do? It'd be good to come to something tonight that we can. What can we live with? I mean, you, I heard you say you thought it was still too tall. But I think.
Well.
You should also suggest that we could just have more slats instead.
Most people have, uh, three foot six fence in their front yard, and. So I would say three foot six above. Grade. From the inside is, you know, would be. Would be the usual thing, and it's still gonna be a big looking thing, big looking fence from the outside.
Because you have the three.
Which is on the, which is on the street.
And I have to say that I do agree with you on that, but I. Think I might hear something different from the two of you, so I wanted to get your thoughts on that, too. We might be a little bit more conservative here.
No, honestly, I, I mean, I tend to agree mainly just, you know. Deferring to a little bit more experience and seeing these things end to end, especially on Brock's side, so, I mean, I, I think I can empathize that. A low fence with that big of a drop, especially if there's like, I don't know if the, the, the homeowner has like children, it's like you could fall off and really hurt yourself very easily. Um, because that'd probably be knee height. But that being said, I, I also understand that, you know, I agree with your earlier point of. You know, Larkspur is great because it's open and it's, you know, transparent in that way.
I guess, I guess one other option would be that you bring it up three feet and then you have a foot. Uh, with a railing, so you just have a open, an opening. Which would essentially create more of a barrier if you're, if it's a pet issue.
Or like a cable type barrier.
We do, we do plan on using the cable on the deck, so maybe that top section. You know, instead of the, you know, the, the wider, uh, skinnier slats that we have there that could be placed by cable.
Yeah, the, the trouble with the skinnier slats that are already there is they're pretty close together, so. Yeah, the, the trouble with the skinnier slats that are already there is they're pretty close together, so it becomes uh, visually pretty solid. Um, and that's, that's the problem I've got with it.
What about trellising? Does that count as?
I think that would have the same effect as the slots that are there now, and essentially in terms of, uh, close it.
You know what I mean? Like you see this trellising sort of?
I mean, maybe we say four foot max, uh, three foot solid max above the in other words, you can yeah, you can play with the last foot, whether you want to put cables or uh, whatever.
To clarify that, that, and so you had, said that you would be open to three foot plus one.
And I was, I was asking for plus two, so the four foot is what, you know, what we come up with.
Four foot two you can have.
Yeah, just because that's what, you know, the, we had one foot two, little more open.
But I think, I think it's important that, that, that you, the solid part is three feet, and then how you deal with the last little bit is really up to you.
Okay, so, so it'd be the retaining wall, then our normal fence height, which is what, three feet, right? Forty-two inches, I think, forty-two inches. And then something pretty on the top.
Something open on the
So, yeah, I mean, I'll take the four foot two with the three foot as solid and then something open that
Something open.
Okay.
Oh.
And I really like the idea of the landscaping on the other side.
Yeah, I mean, I think, you know, if you look at the pictures, and these were from right after the last meeting, um he's already got some plants in there. I mean, they're not like, well, they're gonna be a big you know, they're not going to give a big boost out there, but it looks like he already planted some stuff in front of the, that wall.
Yeah, and I, and I will, I'm going to return back to the staff report, because they, they had also wanted or they just, they recommended native plants, Bay Area native plants to grow along the side of concrete driveway.
Right, exactly.
So maybe that can be a similar requirement for this particular fence.
Do we have to be concerned with those growing into like the street, or is that not in our scope tonight?
It's a long way from the street.
Okay, yeah, I guess so.
It's up here.
Yeah, you're right.
Yeah. I, I think then we, we're done, so unless you have anything else. Um, in that case, maybe we, somebody could attempt to make a motion that covers quite a few changes. So um, would anyone like to try and do that?
Okay, um, so I'll move to approve project twenty-two dash eighteen for eighty-eight Hazel Avenue. Subject to, uh, so the design review and floor area exception, slope use permit. Setback variants for the deck and the uh, corner of the property.
The non-conforming structure.
The non-conforming structure. And then a
Fence height exception subject to the following.
Yeah, fence height exception uh, subject to uh, the existing retaining wall. A three foot solid fence above that, and then up to one foot, two inch of open fencing. And also the, at least six five gallon shrubs native to the Bay Area that will grow at least four feet tall to be planted along the concrete driveway.
That's a different condition, so we would just want a number of shrubs native to the Bay Area that will grow to block the concrete retaining wall. Sorry to jump in.
No, that's okay.
At least, were you with me on that? Yeah.
The, the, the already built retaining wall, that one.
And then
Existing. Yeah, this, this concrete driveway is the other wall that's going up with the driveway.
Okay, I was just doing plants all lumped together.
Yeah, yeah.
And then uh shrubs native to the Bay Area planted along the existing wooden retaining wall, right?
So you can just read what's on there. That's accurate. At least a six, five gallon shrubs native to the Bay Area that will grow to at least four foot tall. At maturity to be planted along the concrete driveway. You didn't change that, did you?
No.
You didn't change, okay.
Okay, uh, at least six five gallon shrubs native to the Bay Area that will grow at least, to be at least four feet tall at maturity to be planted along the concrete driveway. And an unspecified number along the wooden retaining wall?
Yeah.
Right? Okay.
That's great, yeah. And then do we need to say anything about the guard rail? Or is that was in your plan?
My recommendation was to modify condition two to say, um, the transparent guard rail shown on the renderings is required for the driveway. And then delete the rest of that sentence.
Okay.
And a transparent guard rail along the driveway as shown in the renderings. That it?
Do we need to address the, the seven, seventy-seven?
Oh, yes, thank you. I forgot about that.
And that the proposed I guess just not, and the project will not block vehicular access to seventy-seven Laurel. Uh, potentially by filling in the retaining wall.
We're going to work, you're going to work. So that there will be a mutual agreement on how the no access to, no, no block, not protruding the access.
Right, I, I would imagine there's already
Okay. That was everything in my notes. Can we have a second? Okay, second by Brock.
I'll second it.
All right, can we have a? All those in favor, Commissioner Chalmers?
Yes.
Commissioner Wagstaff?
Yes.
Commissioner Williamson?
Yes.
Commissioner Campbell?
Yes.
And Commissioner Swisher is absent, so the motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good thing we have no audience tonight.
Oh my goodness. Well, we made it us good, though. Thank you for something that. Okay, well, that concludes the public portion of our meeting tonight, and um, we just have the business items to discuss, which is the approval of
Just the February fourteenth minutes?
Yes.
And I left some revisions that Commissioner Chalmers had requested um, at your seats tonight.
Yes, I read the minutes and Yeah, here it is. Sorry, it was hidden under my class. Think she just stapled it in.
Oh, yeah, up here.
Did anyone have any questions? Otherwise, can we go ahead and prove the minutes?
I'll move, we approve the minutes.
Have a second?
Second.
Commissioner Chalmers?
Yes.
Commissioner Wagstaff?
Yes.
Commissioner Williamson?
Yes.
Commissioner Campbell?
Yes.
And Commissioner Swisher is absent, so the motion carries.
You know what we failed to do? Was to talk about the, any continuance of
Oh, that's true, yeah.
Do that.
Let's do that.
Okay, so we're reopening the public portion. You, you're right, I guess we are still in the order of the original agenda.
So for for sixteen Diane Lane, uh, because we don't have a quorum of commissioners to consider the item tonight, we're recommending that, that hearing be continued to the March twenty-eighth Planning Commission meeting at seven PM, which will be held here and again on, on Zoom.
And I know you and we can make it, I heard, I, can, are you able to, able that, okay.
And the applicants and appellantants can make it so that, and that we'll see what comes in this week, but it might be the only item on the agenda, so it might be.
But just to clarify, we need
Three.
We need, yeah, Liam and Max and Jeff.
Right.
To have a quorum for that, so it needs to be a to be able to hear them.
So if you could make a motion to continue to March fourteenth, the March fourteenth, sorry, March twenty-eighth Planning Commission meeting, that would be great.
Okay, I'll, I'll move to continue item number twenty-two, twenty-three, sixteen Diane Lane to the March twenty-eighth Planning Commission meeting.
Second.
All those in favor, Commissioner Chalmers?
Yes.
Commissioner Wagstaff?
Yes.
Commissioner Williamson?
Yes.
Commissioner Campbell?
Yes.
And Commissioner Swisher is absent. So that motion carries. Thank you.
And it would be really good if we could hear it, because I think it's been continued twice now, this one, so. Right?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, and then um, any planning commissioners' reports? That'll be useful. No? In that case, can we have um, a motion to adjourn the meeting tonight?
I'll move, we adjourn.
I'll second.
Take a vote, Commissioner Chalmers. We can just say all those in favor.
Yes, yes.
Thank you.
Right, thank you.